The hour convening having arrived, all members of the House will please take their seats. All members of the House will report to the floor and take your seats. Mr. Clark, would you ring the bell? All members will please come to the floor and take your seats. We are going to have the morning roll call. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? It's amazing what those cards will do when you put them in, right? Have all members now voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines. Doorkeepers will please close the doors and keep them closed. Well, good morning. Another beautiful day here today, and we're getting closer to the end. I'm trying to look around and see if we have a chaplain. You're supposed to laugh on that. I do have the honor of introducing our chaplain of the day. Needs no introduction to this body. Y'all know him as the Chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, and I know him as one of the best friends I have in the world, Terry England. Chairman England is a man of integrity. I don't know anybody that's got a kinder, more gentle spirit than he does, and who walks close with our Lord each and every day, and it's reflected in his life in all areas. He and I have laughed together. We've been to the mountaintop together, been to the valley together. Mountaintops are more fun, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah, I thought so. We buried friends together, and so I cherish the relationship that I have with him, and I know that you're going to be in for a real treat today. It is my honor, my personal privilege, to introduce to you at this time, Deacon Terry England of the Auburn First Baptist Church in Auburn, Georgia.
Well, you heard him say I was Baptist. So he was a little boy in church this past Sunday. Our preacher loved him dearly, and he gets a little long-winded sometimes, and he said in conclusion, and his little boy looked at his daddy and said, Daddy, what does in conclusion mean? And his daddy said with him, absolutely nothing. But good morning, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for those kind words, and I can't put into words what your friendship has meant to me, and absolutely, we've been on the mountaintops and we've been in the valleys. And all of those times that we've been on the mountaintops and we've been in the valleys, the thing that I know that you've known and the thing that I've known while we were there is that the Spirit was with us and walking with us. And if you know in the Psalms, it talks about, "Yea, though I walked through the valley of the shadow of death." It says he's walking, the person you are walking through the valley of the shadow of death. It doesn't say the Lord is carrying you, but it says he's walking there with you. So that's something always important to remember. You know, I've wanted to do this for quite some time, and I've told Ms. Cathy and told Ms. Alicia before her that if we ever wind up, that a preacher couldn't be here or whatever to let me know, and I'd be glad to kind of pinch you up for a day. So Speaker mentioned I'm a deacon in our church, a small little church in Auburn, Georgia, Auburn First Baptist. And when I was ordained, there were four things that we were told that we should be expected to do. One, be ready to preach the Word. Two, always be ready to pray. Three, always, always be ready to lead someone to Christ. And four, always be ready to take up an offering. So I'm gonna ask the ushers if they will come forward. We'll take up a little offering. Brother Allen knows exactly what I'm talking about there. So several years ago, when I ran for office in 2004 and during that election cycle, I had a gentleman that worked for us at our feed store, Mr. George. George was, he was just a hoot, but just a godly man and just a pleasure to be around, always smiling and always, you know, always had your back. And, you know, we joked, in a lot of ways, we called him the chef, because he drove a forklift a lot. Well, usually inadvertently, he would stick a fork from the forklift in a bag of feed, so we called him the chef, because he was always checking to see if stuff was done. But George relayed to me one day, in the middle of the campaign, a dream he had had. Now, when someone tells you about a dream that they had that involves God, you probably need to listen. And George relayed to me that day, he came straight to me that morning, he'd always get there early, and I'd always get there early, he came straight to me in office that morning, and he said, Terry had a dream last night, and you need to look at James 3:13. I said, okay. Now, understand, James is my favorite book of the Bible. Some of you may have heard me refer to the book of James as Cliff Notes of the Bible, because it kind of covers all the bases in five chapters. And so I'm like, okay, the tongue, da-da-da, I gotta look and see exactly what 3:13 is. So in the King James Version, "Who is a wise man and a dude with knowledge among you? Let him show out of a good conversation his works with meekness of wisdom." Dropping on down to verse 17, "But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, and easy to be entreated, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy." And summing up in 18, "And the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace of them that make peace." So read that, and when I first read it in the King James, I'm kind of like, well, was George kind of cutting me when he said that? Because, you know, you read it in that old English, so you pull up a couple of different versions, and you kind of start realizing what it's saying and what it does. And I think you all understand what it's saying, is seek wisdom from God, seek wisdom from the one above, because that is the best wisdom. The earthly wisdom we have carries nothing for us but hurt and heartache, but the wisdom from God is the wisdom that carries us through every day. Down in my office, there's a big whiteboard. Many of you have been in there, and you've seen James 3:13 up there in that little right-hand corner. It's been up there the entire time that whiteboard has been there. Just kind of as a daily reminder to me that when, in those times that I think I'm super smart or really did something great, you know, I look up there and I see that and realize, well, I was just an instrument, or I was God's tool in doing that. It wasn't me. There was nothing about me that enabled me to do what I have done. And that's with all of us in this room. We may think we're super smart, and many of you in this room are incredibly smart. Most of you in this room are incredibly smart. All of you in this room, I better make sure I get that right. All of you in this room are very smart. But, you know, the good Lord gives us that intelligence, and he expects us to use it in ways that help others. And I think truly, we've got an aisle, and we talk about other sides, different sides of the aisle, but I tell people at home, I tell people everywhere I go, that while we may all have different ideologies, and we may have different priorities, that people come here with a heart of service, that each of us are in this room to help people. And we deal with a budget every year, a big budget every year. But the thing that we always try to remember, and Martha reminds me, and I remind Martha and our subcommittee chairs, that there's a person at the end of every one of those dollars, and that person's the customer. And they're expecting their state to look out for them. You know, James goes on and talks a lot more, and talks some about the tongue and how mighty the tongue is. As a rudder can direct a ship, a mighty ship, a little bit of rudder can move that ship through the waters. So can our tongue be incredibly hurtful or incredibly helpful. And that's what he reminds us of in James, is to use it to be helpful. So, you know, we do a home, we still do a traditional homecoming at our church every year. It's usually the latter part of September, and our church has been in our community for over 130 years, and we're a small church and a small group of folks, and we always have a good eating. You know, we look for, we're Baptist, we look for reasons to eat. So, you know, Easter morning, we have a breakfast, and then Easter, sometimes we'll have a lunch, and homecoming day, we'll have a breakfast and a lunch, and, you know. So homecoming this past year, we always have some folks that are guests that come to be with us, that family members have been part of the church through the years and everything. So a little lady came this year and lives in our community, and she had on one of those, I call them sack dresses, you know, folks used to make them out of flour sacks and everything, got two little pockets on the side and everything. This lady got in there that morning for breakfast, and she ate a good breakfast. But we kind of got to watching, and she started kind of stuffing sausage biscuits in her pockets. Well, get on in the service, preacher, he's preaching the Word, and folks being moved, well, she got hold of the Spirit and come running down front at the invitation, and she said, I want to be baptized right now, preacher, I want to be baptized right now. I want my sins washed away, I want to be baptized right now. So preacher said, all right, hold on a minute, we'll turn the spigot on in the baptismal pool and get it full, and so run up there, and she comes down in the water, and he dunks her down in the water, and all of a sudden, those biscuits come floating up out of her pockets, up on top of the water. And one of my fellow deacons in the back of the church says, dunk her again, preacher, her sins are coming up in chunks. But you know, the great part, the great part of baptism, and whichever method you do, and I know, you know, the Methodist sprinkle, and some use a squirt bottle, and we always dunk. Now, when we had the drought in 2007, we went to sprinkling, and the Methodist went to use a damp cloth around home because it got so dry. But there's nothing that that water actually does. It's symbolism. But what the symbolism is, is the death of Christ and his resurrection, where he died for our sins. Yes, it's symbolic, but it's our public profession of faith at that point when we do that, that we've accepted that, that we've accepted that cleansing spirit that Jesus Christ put into our lives. Every day, as I start my day, and I hope many of you do, and I know many of you do because you've told me, we always need to ask for that wisdom from above, along with knowledge, discernment, understanding, and grace and mercy. You know, God never moves. We stray away from Him and go in different directions. Our lives get busy, we've got ballgames to go to and soccer matches and all those things, and we stray away from the Lord. But I want to tell you something. The Lord will come to you. I said he never moved, but yet he'll come to you. Think about that for just a little bit. He's everywhere, he's all-seeing, he's all-knowing. He can meet us where we are. One of my favorite songs, I heard it last night, Inspiration Quartet, "When God dips his love into my heart." And if you let him, he'll do it. He'll do it to the point that it's overflowing. That fountain of grace is something that we all need. As we wind down this special session, I hope that you all turn to that grace and that mercy that he provides, that he gives so easily that he wants to give to you. As we go home next week and we're with our families for Thanksgiving, we all need to take time to be thankful for those gathered around us, because as we look around our tables, there's probably going to be one that was there last year that isn't with us this year. But we need to be thankful for the time we have with those individuals, and be thankful for the time we have with the ones that are around the table this year. So if y'all will join me for a word of prayer. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you thanking you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the strength that you give us. Lord, we thank you for the mercy and grace that you bestow upon us. Lord, most of all, we thank you for sending your Son to die on that cross for our sins that we may be free. Lord, we're here today, if there's one among us are hearing this that doesn't know you, Lord, I pray that before this day is out, that they would open their heart, mind, and soul that you would enter in, and that they would come to know you, come to know that love that only you can provide. Lord, we just love you and just thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here, to represent those folks back home, our families, our friends, our neighbors, those folks that you have placed us here, in a position of trust, to do the things that you would have us to do. And Lord, we just pray that everything that we do here and everything that we say here would be things that would be pleasing unto you, words that would be pleasing unto you, and actions that would be pleasing unto you. Lord, be with us as we go through this day, be with our speaker, be with our governor, lieutenant governor, all of our leaders across this nation, our president and many others, our men and women fighting abroad to keep us free, and those protecting us here at home. Lord, we just love you, and we thank you for all that you do and all that you've done, and the love that you show us. For it's all these things, in Christ's name we pray. Amen. If y'all would join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is that all right?
Good job, man.
Thank you. Thank you, Father.
Love you, brother.
Chair recognizes Chairman Hogan, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Information and Audits has read the Journal of the previous legislative day and found it to be correct. And furthermore, Mr. Speaker, we seldom repent for having eaten too little. Thomas Jefferson.
You've been reading a lot of Jefferson lately, haven't you?
He's my hero.
All right. Chairman Hogan, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the Journal of the previous legislative day has been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The chair hears none in the Journal. Is confirmed. The clerk will read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Mr. Burns, 159th, moving to establish as the order of business during the first part of the period unanimous consensus. Introduction of Bills and Resolutions, second reading of Bills and Resolutions, morning orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Second reading of Bills and Resolutions, the clerk will read.
House Bill 11 EX by Representative Anderson of the 10th and Irwin of the 28th, a bill to authorize the city of Cornelia to exercise all redevelopment and other powers under the redevelopment powers law, three second readers.
There are no reports of standing committees today, so we're about to go on to morning orders. Going on to morning orders. Okay, if you'll hurry along to greet Chairman England. Mr. Chairman, everybody's wanting to come down and see you this morning. Now, it's not long till January. Okay, I think we're about to get through the line here. We're going on now to morning orders. Going to morning orders. The chair will ask all the members of this body to take your seats and give respect to the members in the well. The chair recognizes for a morning order, the Chief Deputy Whip of the Majority Caucus, Representative Leverett.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, I rise briefly this morning to say a few words in memory of my mother, and also to say a couple of words about you. Florence Kemp Leverett was born down in Lawrence County back in 1930 on February 4th, and I don't know if they make everybody in Lawrence County this way, Matt, but to say that she was outspoken was quite an understatement. I don't know if you got to read the obituary that my sister Cheryl Williams drew, but we should all be blessed with such a good obituary draftsman as my sister, because she nailed it. As she said, if you didn't want to know my mother's opinion, you'd better not ask it. And even if you didn't ask, you might get it anyway. Undiluted and unfiltered, that's the way she was. She passed away on Saturday and had been in declining health. She lost my dad, we lost my dad about 25 years ago, and she missed him dearly. But she was a wonderful lady, was very active all of her life until dementia took some of that from her. But I want to talk a little bit about all of you. I'm sorry I could not be here Monday for obvious reasons, and I hate that Cam McLaren was here, and I hate not having been here for his devotional. But as soon as the speaker made mention that Mom had passed, my cellphone almost was knocked out of commission by all the texts that I've got and the texts that I have received. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. I'm sad that I have lost one of the most important members of my family, and I will miss her dearly, but I'm so thankful for the family I have and all of you, and just want to express my appreciation to all of you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I yield the will.
Chair recognizes Representative Cameron for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise today to remember a great member of the Rossville, Georgia community who passed away suddenly yesterday, Carthel Rogers. Mr. Rogers was a member of the Walker County School Board, having been recently appointed to fill a vacancy. He also was Director of the Recreation Center in Rossville, Georgia, but his most important role was the years and years he invested in the lives of people and the young people of Rossville, Georgia, helping provide recreational programs for young people and disadvantaged, and promoting their growth into adulthood. He was going to run our parade this year in Rossville, he was doing something all the time to help other people, he was a great neighbor and a great friend to all of us. He leaves a big hole in our hearts, so it will never be filled. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I yield the will.
Chair recognizes Representative Jasmine Clark for a morning order.
Good morning, colleagues. It is with a heavy heart that we bring news of the passing of Alexandra Morales. Alexandra Morales was a teacher at Benefield Elementary in Lawrenceville, where she served as a teacher since 2019. Along with being a beloved member of the faculty, Ms. Morales was the epitome of inclusion and a beacon of representation as a bilingual teacher that truly connected with many students in which English was not their first language. In October of this year, she took a scheduled leave and unfortunately did not return. After being reported missing by her family, her story came to a tragic end when her body was found. The tragic death of Ms. Morales leaves a big gaping hole in the hearts of the Benefield Elementary family, along with all that loved her. Today, we offer condolences to those touched by this tragedy, and ask that you take a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes the Dean of this House, Dean Smyrie, and Representative Dukes for a morning order. a morning order.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representatives Smyrie and myself come forth today because 110 years ago, on the campus of Howard University in Thurgood Hall, a group of young men, Edgar Love, Oscar J. Cooper, Frank Coleman, along with their faculty advisor, started what many feel is the greatest organization known to the history of the world. That being the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity. We would like for you to join us in celebrating and acknowledging this moment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Chairman Maffiac for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning, everybody. Today, what a perfect day to get this book, Chairman England, I don't see you now, but anyways, everybody should have gotten this book on their desk in their offices. Representative Clint Crowe, David Knight, Susan Holmes, and Beth Camp and I gifted each of you Defying the Odds. Our pastor Benny Tate wrote that and many of you have heard him here in the chamber. It's an inspirational book of Dr. Tate's personal testimony of how God guided him through a number of obstacles, providing him the strength he needed. Dr. Tate serves as a pastor at Rock Springs Church in Milner, Georgia, and he and his congregation pray for us daily. Thank you and I hope you enjoy the book.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Representative Hughley for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We'd like for all of those who are members of panhellenic organizations to stand with us at this time. If you are a member of a panhellenic organization, please stand. Today, as been noted, an organization celebrates a Founder's Day, the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated, November the 17th, 1911. This organization was founded on the principles of manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. There are many famous men and great men that belong to Omega and you've seen two of them this morning, but I want to give a shout out to another great man of Omega, his name is Isaiah Hughley. So, 110 years later, these men believe that friendship is essential to the soul. Congratulations to all the men of Omega today.
Chair recognizes Representative Nguyen for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, Georgia and communities across our country will celebrate and highlight the important roles that education support professionals play in our public schools. These are the people who drive our children to school and serve our kids breakfast and lunch. ESP professionals are also administrative support staff, custodians, paraffin professionals, school safety officers, and other non-teaching education members in our public schools. ESP Day is part of National Education Week, starting from November 15th to November 19th, which celebrates excellence in public schools. And we know now more than ever, especially under the COVID-19 pandemic, that these education professionals are essential to the well-being of our Georgia children. So today, from the Georgia General Assembly, I'd like to thank ESP professional support staff and acknowledge their expertise and their hard work in keeping our children safe, greeting them from the first moment they walk into the classroom, and getting them home safely at the end of the day. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Representative Kennard for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have stood so many times during morning orders during this special session to honor members of our community who have passed into eternity, including slain police officers. Did you know that it is more likely for a firefighter or law enforcement personnel to die by suicide than it is in the line of duty? It takes a psychological toll on our first responders, the work that they do every day. As a matter of fact, with all of our first responders, there's an exponential likelihood that they will experience PTSD and other forms of psychological injury while doing their important work. I think many of us are aware of the work ahead of us to improve mental health and behavioral health outcomes. There's a lot of heavy lifting we need to do as a body because there's so many of these issues, mental and behavioral health, that affect so many of our Georgia citizens. And I look forward in this upcoming session for us working together to move the needle in some significant and meaningful ways. If you'd like to be a part of the Mental Health Caucus, please see me or Chairman Todd Jones. Thank you.
The clerk will read the caption to a group of privileged resolutions.
Recognizing and celebrating the long life of Doyle Akins. Honoring the life and memory of Deborah McGee McCrery. Celebrating the Sixth Annual Women's Entrepreneurship Day. Recognizing and commending Mayor Joe Lockwood. Recognizing and commending John Quincy Terry on his outstanding service to his community. Recognizing and commending Mayor Mike Abadkar. Recognizing November 21st, November 2021 is Native American Heritage Month. Recognizing and commending Mayor Pro Tem Tammy Pierce on her outstanding public service. Recognizing and commending Mayor Jim Trot on his outstanding public service. Recognizing and commending Kenya and Torrance Crumpley. Recognizing November 7th, 2021 as Retired Educator's Day and for other purposes. That completes the reading of the privileged resolutions.
Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolutions? The Chair hears none and the resolutions are adopted. We have some announcements, listen up for the announcements. The Chair recognizes Chairman Corbett for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. 1:00 today in the CLOB, Room 406, the Rural Development Council will be meeting. We have two speakers lined up, so everybody try to be there on time. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairman Dollar for an announcement.
Thank you, Speaker. Members, leaders from the Taiwan office in Atlanta have lunch for us today down in Senate Mez from 11:30 to 1:00. Please come by and say hi, thanks.
Chair recognizes the distinguished Chairman of the Minority Caucus, Representative Mitchell for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the Democratic Caucus, we will meet tomorrow morning at 8:30 a.m. Breakfast will be served. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Chairman Hawkins for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Budget and Fiscal Affairs Oversight Committee will be meeting today at 1:30 in Room 341, CAP 341. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairman Newton for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just an update on, a lot of us have had COVID-19 vaccines. We come together from all over Georgia and then we go back to our families. We're going to be doing that over the next few days and then we'll do it over the holidays and then come back in January. I think boosters are a critical way to make sure that the vaccines work. They're offered downstairs today. They have all three, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, or Pfizer. There's no waiting, you can come right in pretty quickly. You can go in and get your booster and therefore help protect your family and help protect us when we come back in January. So I hope you'll take advantage of one of our local FQHCs who's put this on for us. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Chairman Darlene Taylor for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The House Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment Committee will meet today in Room 406 at 3:00 p.m. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Representative Oliver for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The MARTOC Committee will meet today at 1:00 p.m. in Room 506 in CLOB. Thank you.
That completes our announcement and takes care of the business to come before the body. The Chair recognizes the Majority Leader of this House for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that this House stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m. Thursday, November the 18th, 2021.
The Majority Leader has moved that this House be adjourned until Thursday, November 18th at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion will say aye, those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, this House will be adjourned until Thursday at 10:00 a.m.